Would like to call to order the March 11th, 2019 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome. It's good to have everybody with us this evening. I hope we didn't mess up people's schedule by changing it from last Monday, but I appreciate everybody's indulgence while some of us were in Washington DC last week for the National Association of Counties Legislative Event, which was excellent. I think we learned a lot and had some good things to bring back, so that was certainly worth our time. First up is approval of the work session agenda, which you all have on page three of the material in front of you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes on page three? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to discussion items. First up, from our Child Protection Team, Paula Yost will be reporting today. Welcome.
So, to begin this year, I always say the standard disclaimers every year. The first thing is that I'm going to talk about things that absolutely no one wants to hear about because it is disturbing, it does involve child fatality. However, that is extremely important, and you guys need to know about it, and it is statutorily mandated that we keep you informed. I will also add that when you look at the fatalities that we've had, based on the size of the county, particularly relative to the growth that the county has experienced, our numbers are relatively good. It's likely impossible to avoid child fatality entirely. I would love us to never have a child fatality, but unfortunately, it is likely an inevitable part of life, and so when we look at population size, our growth is not that bad, or our fatality to growth ratio is not bad. The other thing I will say is that this is a collective that's been put together by our team. This is not my personal opinion. Ah, fabulous. Okay. So, first of all, the Child Protection and Fatality Team is statutorily mandated by General Statute 7B 1407. In our county, we have combined both the fatality and the protection teams. Some counties have them divided into two, but we do them as one. We examine all the deaths of children in the county during the previous calendar year. We discuss each case, and we ponder the ways that each death could be prevented, and we also look globally at anything we can do to better serve the county's children. We're an interdisciplinary group of community representatives who meet regularly to attempt to tackle problems relating to child abuse and neglect. So, I want to go over with you real quickly our 2017 fatalities. We had five illnesses, or five fatalities that were as a result of illness. These would be things that were considered acts of God that no one and nothing could have prevented. We also had eight fatalities that were based on infant prematurity. As a general rule, a fetus needs to make it to approximately 25 weeks in order to be considered viable. Sometimes fetuses are able to survive when they're born earlier, at like 22 or 23 weeks, but it is very difficult. So, most of these babies are babies who made it past what women would traditionally characterize as a miscarriage, but didn't make it long enough that they could actually be viable. So, we lost eight that way. We had four deaths that were accidental, from car accident and what we consider unsafe sleep. And then probably the only one that we would really want to talk about more, that our team talked about more, is we did have one 17-year-old who completed suicide. And what we would say about that is, we're not going to argue with anyone about their constitutional right to carry a firearm, but what we would say is that if you have firearms in your home, and you have children in your home, you have to remember that children do not have a fully-developed brain, and you never know when one of them is suffering from depression and will wind up making an impulsive decision that they cannot take back. So, it is extremely important that handguns be responsibly managed, and this includes not only parents, but really any adult in the county who has children who are visiting a home frequently. Children do take handguns and make bad choices with them, so certainly you as an adult don't want to be emotionally or mentally responsible for that. We also had three other fatalities that we were not able to talk about because they are currently pending review by the District Attorney's Office. Once those cases reach a conclusion, then we will talk about them. So, the total fatality that we had in 2017 was 21, which is pretty consistent with our numbers. Outside of that is our fatality numbers for the last four years. So, as you can see, we kind of sit somewhere between 18 and 25, which again, based on the population size of Cabarrus County, is not a bad number. These are the Department of Human Services numbers for child abuse. They had a little over 3,000 CPS reports that were received. Accepted reports were around 2,200. The average number of open cases in in-home services, so in-home services is cases that are not foster care services, but rise beyond investigation. A lot of times, these are cases that are just strictly poverty. Where there's not abuse or neglect, it's just parents who do not have the means to financially support their children. There were 53 of those cases. There were 95 children in foster care on average per month. There were 72 petitions filed for custody, and 57 foster children moved to permanence. So, moving to permanence can mean any number of things. It can mean that a child was legally adopted. It can also mean that a child was reunified with their biological parents, assuming that the biological parents worked their plan and did everything that DSS required them to do in order to get custody of their child back. And now, I'm actually going to hand this presentation over to Chief Assistant District Attorney Ashley Shanley. So, in previous years, we've talked to you guys about a range of things, including mental health and including homelessness, and those are very serious topics that certainly need to be addressed. But this year, we decided it would be best to talk to you guys about kids and the Internet, because what we are seeing is that these children are growing up in a completely different world than what any of us have ever seen before, and the impact on the Internet and their lives is completely different than what most of us as adults and as parents would anticipate our children having to deal with. And so, Ashley sees this all the time in the DA's office, and has been doing a great job of educating parents and families, even in Cabarrus County school systems, about the dangers of Internet safety, and so I'm going to turn the rest of the presentation over to her.
Good afternoon. I know that we talk so often about issues in our area, and how a lot of times, we need the finances to handle those. This is one where we don't. I think we've been successful. We finally realized that if I can prevent a case from ever getting to my desk, we're not only preventing the child from being victimized, we're stopping all of the resources that would be needed. And what we have found, that children and the Internet, two ways, they're going to either be a victim or be charged. And so, we've gone, I've spoken with probably almost every school in the county, we've had parent nights, we have empower counselors scheduling things, and it is interesting to see how often this question comes up. On the way over here, I'm getting calls from parents. This is what my child is experiencing. Can you help me? Calls from students. What do I do here? And so, what we thought we would do is just give a flavor of what we're teaching the community, so that if you can help us spread this message, we can help kids not be victims, and also make sure these kids aren't charged with some of the offenses, because a lot of times, they find out too late that they can be charged by their behavior on the Internet. I'm just going to go through this and give you a little idea of what we are informing our community. Obviously, they can make excellent choices with social media, but they can also do bad choices. If I could say one thing to parents and kids, it would be this: Understand that a predator on the Internet is never going to identify who they are or what they want. I was speaking with a mother of a little boy, and he had found some type of chatroom that she didn't even know existed on a child-type site, and is telling her about this person talking to them. I had a mom of a little girl tell me that she was on a Barbie site, and the little girl says, "Hey, Mom, I'm talking to someone. Why do they want to know what I'm wearing?" We have to understand that predators out there go where the children are, and so I think if parents know that's out there, they can better protect their children. We give tips. It is amazing to me, you guys, that kids, students, think that they are popular by how many followers they have on their Snapchat or Instagram. And we go, and I'm talking to the kids, I'll say, "All right, how many of you think that someone who has 1,000 friends is more popular than someone who has 30 that actually know them?" To them, those numbers mean something, and so what that means is they will act in a dangerous manner to get those likes and followers. They'll keep their accounts open. And so, here, we've got some slides, making sure students and parents know that you must keep this information private. The number-one thing I see, and you guys, with my cases that go to trial, I look at a lot of phone data. This is the number-one thing. This is what a lot of kids will put as their screen name. Ashley, CHS19. You guys, what do you think that says? That person, Concord High School, class of 2019. What does that reveal to a stranger? How old you are. They'll do that with their middle school, their high school, we tell them, "Don't put your school name. Don't put your date of graduation." It just lets predators out there know, you know, who you are and what age. This one, I've had so many cases, and I tell the kids, "This isn't New York, this isn't California, it's here in Concord," where they are meeting someone online, the person is pretending to be their own age, and then when they go and meet the person, it's an adult. And often, the kids are so shocked, things happen before they can get away. And so, when I'm going to the schools, and I've got the school's permission, I'm telling the kids about this, because we've got to protect them. They've got to know that this is a risk. I think it's so important that kids understand that they can exit a conversation. We talk about photos, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, locking down your social media. I ask the kids, "Before you came to this school event, how many of you locked your front door?" And most of them raise their hands. Well, you've got to do the same with your social media. You've got to lock it. The last piece I tell them is with a lot of my offenders, they will use information that the kids are posting to gain trust with the kids. It's often sad. You'll have a student say, "I just failed that math test again," or, "My mom doesn't understand," or, "I just broke up with so-and-so." Well, then the offenders use that information to start talking with the kid. And you can imagine, it's pretty effective. So, we talk with parents, "Make sure your child is not broadcasting that for the strangers of the world." And then, of course, we're very big on reporting any bullying message. When I go and talk to schools, there hasn't been a time yet, when I talk about bullying, that I haven't had some student come up to me and say, "What do you do if you're being bullied?" It's happening, and this is why I think parents, the more they're involved, the more we can stop this. I think looking around at the table, maybe except for maybe Laura, because she looks very young, but for me and the rest of us, when we were in school, when we went home, the day ended. If there were mean kids, they really couldn't get to us, because we were at home. But for the younger generation, they have that phone, and the bullying continues, and I think that's what we're working with our kids. I won't go through it here, but with the parents, I showed them some quick ways that they can lock down, this is Snapchat, and I just show some screens, how you can make it safer with just a couple of checks. In the Contact Me section, I tell the parents, "Make sure your child says 'my friends,' and not everyone." In the My Story, showing their contacts and what they're showing, what they're publishing, make sure it's limited to 'my friends.'" But this one, I wanted to really focus on, because you guys, it's scary what's out there. As a prosecutor, this scares me. This is a Snapchat app, and a couple of years ago, they changed it where it allows for geo-tracking. That means if your child has Snapchat and doesn't have this locked down, then anyone else who has Snapchat will know exactly where your kid is. But there's a way you can stop it. It's this section of Snapchat, it's called My Location, and there's a button that's called Ghost Mode. All you need to do is make sure it's enabled. I explained to the parents, "You want your child to be a ghost to the rest of the community." And so, just that one thing will stop the GPS tracking, but that's scary, that anybody could know where our kids are. So, those are some of the things that we talk about. We ask parents to make sure their children aren't victims. But I'm also having a number of students come before us who have been charged, and these charges, we know, will ultimately affect their ability to get into college, have jobs, et cetera. So, we are going out there, and we're getting the message out there, "Don't do these things." Cyber stalking is one of the things I'm seeing our kids do. I put in here the slides of what the statute is. Ultimately, it's using some type of electronic to threaten or harass another student, or maybe an administrator or teacher. Kids don't know that it is a crime to do it, and so we're out there telling them, "Be careful before you push send." We talk about that not only making the message, but sending the message to others can be a crime, and so we provide to our parents and students, "What do you do if you get one of these messages?" Don't send it. Delete it, and speak with a trusted adult or school resource officer. This one, I'll just briefly touch on. We're having an epidemic of this. We are having, where these explicit photographs are being shared with others in the school. As I explained to the parents, this is normally what happens, you'll have a couple of high schoolers get into a relationship. One of them might take photographs of the other doing some things, and then they're shocked when the relationship ends after two weeks, and one of the parties decides, "Huh, I'm going to distribute all these photographs to the rest of the school." It's happening all over the state, it's happening all over the country. We've had, in some states, some of the victims of that have been so embarrassed that they've taken their own lives. That's not going to happen here. So, we tell the students out there, "Don't take the photos, and definitely don't send them," because what they don't understand is the consequences under the law is huge. You guys, it's a felony to engage in those type of photographs, it's a felony to send those type of photographs, because it's considered child pornography. If the child is under the age of 18, it's in some type of sexual act, even if they are willingly participating, it's child pornography. Now, we don't want to be prosecuting students for child pornography. I've got enough adult offenders for that, but I think we can't have students taking their own lives and going through those embarrassing and humiliating circumstances. Finally, I'll say this: With the Child Protective Team, with the DA's office, we want to work hard, because we want to see students in school and activities and graduation. I do not want to see them in my courtroom, either as victims or as offenders. So, if there's anything you can do to help us spread this message, please know that we have a Speaker's Bureau who will go out to any place that'll have us. I think I've gone to youth groups, and school clubs, and what have you, because we want to get the word out. But that's all I had. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ashley?
Don't have any questions, but I would just say thank you, guys, for your commitment and passion and dedication, and as we were talking earlier, the collaborative efforts that are made to try to keep our children safe and on the right track.
Yeah, Ditto. I'm just sitting here thinking, with all the caseload that you guys have there, how in the world you're able to do all this outreach, which is extremely important, and I know that that is above and beyond what many counties do, so thank you very much. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item is Fiscal Year 2020 Capital Improvement Discussion. Kristin, Susan, and Kyle.
This is a continuation from your retreat. We did not get to this because of our conversations had lasted a little longer than we expected, although they were very good conversations, but we were not able to get to this item at our retreat.
Good evening. So, I'll just briefly walk you through the spreadsheet, and Kyle will probably touch more specifically on some of the county-wide proposed projects. So, really what the spreadsheet's showing is what is available in the Capital Reserve Fund, so you can kind of follow that down. You can see that the Capital Reserve balance, and then with our 15% fund balance transfer, and then some partial closeouts of other projects, it gives us around $14.8 million in the Capital Reserve Fund to fund our capital improvement projects on. So, kind of how we have it divided out is our proposed FY20 county projects, and then our school projects, and then the larger list is the full projects that were requested that we currently have deferred funding for. So, I can walk you through the county projects. We've had a few meetings, so this is still, again, we're early in the budget process, but we did have these projects identified to talk with you at the retreat, and just due to time constraints, we were unable to do so. So, Kyle, do you mind kind of going over the county projects?
Sure. Sure. And a lot of these, you folks have seen in the retreats before. Obviously, our CIPs are like a chessboard, and we continuously move and shift, so some of these may ring a bell, and if there, as I go through them, if there's anyone you want more details on, you can let me know. The first one listed is the Arena Kitchen Goods Storage Building Replacement. That is the building that is in the rear of the facility, so facing the school administration building, if you will. That building has a complete exterior wall and concrete failure. It's got water all sorts of, going in all spaces of it, they can't use it for any of the storage of their dry goods, and actually, if you're at the Cabarrus rooms in the arena, and you always notice that they have up the, actually blinds across the hallway where the kitchen is, that is where all that stuff is sitting, is behind all those curtains. So, this is to repair that and be able to get that equipment back outside and help with their operations. The Camp Spencer Vending Machine Building and Overlook, that's actually, the entire CIP is three different projects, and what we're proposing for next year is two portions of it. The first one is, in fact, a vending machine, three-sided building. Currently, for anybody that's out there in the cabins, staying out there, there are no vending machines to be used. So, these would be vending machines that would be out and be able to be used 24/7, because as you know, we have people that stay in the park in those cabins, and they don't have anywhere to go for food. The Overlook is more of like a boardwalk through some of the heavily wooded area of Camp Spencer. Would be on the other side of the pool, we have a trail that goes around the entire part, and this would be a nature boardwalk and overlook that would be put in there. The next project is the courthouse expansion and renovation. I don't really think I need to tell you all about that.
I do have a question.
Sure.
On that, on item 11 tonight, we're going to be talking about some advance monies that's needed. Is this part of that money, Susan?
It is.
Okay.
We have some more detail for that. No, no. You're right.
The next item on there is the Frankliss Park Waterline Replacements. So, obviously, those are original to the park. They are slip joint, and they blow out, and they blow out often. So, we have come up with a plan to start phasing from the water main back and start replacing water lines. We're actually trying to do this prior to the CIPs that are coming up for Frankliss Park in terms of expansion. As you know, right now, we are building a small, lower-lot restroom. It's actually fed from a different water line, or a different branch of a water line. This would be more of the water main that comes up behind the park's office and feeds the barn and everything there, because we do have CIPs in the next few years to renovate that entire park's office and mini-golf area, and it would be Hoover County to go ahead and replace all that infrastructure in the ground prior to doing that work. That's why we've left that in there. The next item is Enterprise Physical Security. That's actually an ITS project, and what you're looking at, the bulk of those funds, are for camera and camera systems. The word enterprise means that it will no longer be the DVD that's stuck in the closet or underneath the kitchen cabinet, where somebody has to go out and physically download what was done. This is enterprise security, which means it's all done via, I assume, the cloud, but also so we can go obtain it. And I know some of you have been involved with incidents that we've had, and we're able to go out and grab what we need and get it for officers or detectives that are investigating, and this is all moving towards that. Governmental Center Roof and Skylight Replacement. Those numbers are actually coming in. That's a portion of it. We have been, had a CIP out there to replace the roof on this building. We also now realize that all of our, all of the skylights are failing completely. So, that is looking at basically finding ways around to have skylights that are like this, more so to let the natural light in, but to use a different surface than just a bunch of rainwater sitting on something like this. So, we've been working with county manager and deputy county manager on different looks, different costs, different ideas of what we're doing, and those numbers are still coming in, but that represents a portion of one of those phases to start that. And obviously, the full project will involve some actual interior renovations for the damage that's already been done, as I'm sure you've seen it all as you walked through the building. The next item is the Training and Firing Range Renovations, $1.7 million. That's primarily environmental and also structural out there, and when I say structural, I mean the berms that keep the bullets in the range, not so much building-wise. We have a significant amount of dirt to remove, a significant amount of dirt to put back, and a significant amount of stormwater subgrade work to do, to make that location flow properly.
The shells have lead in them? Is that why we've got to get them out of the ground?
Yes, they do, sir.
Kyle, backing up just for a minute on the governmental center.
Yes, sir.
The 775,000, is that the net amount, or did we get some type of insurance proceeds for the damage that was caused by the storm?
Nothing that you have under there is under warranty now. Those are original skylights to the building.
Okay, so there's no warranty regardless of weather and how it leaked.
So, there's no warranty. No, and that number is still fluctuating. We hired an architect and an engineer right after we had the first tropical storm. It was downgrade, it was a hurricane, but then it got downgraded. We have had them working on three different scenarios with three different costs, and those numbers are still coming in right now. That is just a portion of it. Those are the things that I'm able to put my hands on, and I know what a new roof will cost. I don't need an architect to tell me that, but when it gets to, how are you going to get rid of skylights but still allow natural light to come in? Because obviously, the way the building was designed was for that natural light to come in, especially while you're walking out there. If you just roof that over, you're going to have some other problems, so we've had to kind of find ways that will architecturally work. Also, again, it's a round building, so it makes it a bit of a challenge.
Look good on paper when they sign.
And it's held up very well. I didn't mean that in a negative way, but when you go in and try to do things, it can become very challenging. The last item is the Operations Center renovation, so we currently have an offer to purchase an operations center, and that is moving forward, it is in the attorney's hands right now and in the seller's hands. As we move forward, we had identified numbers to move fleet maintenance over there, which is what we're trying to do, is grow because of the amount of ambulances and large vehicles that we have. That number represents us, instead of moving fleet maintenance over first, that represents moving our General Services or Infrastructure and Asset Management Administration Department over there first. The thought process being behind that is if we can vacate the building located at 242 General Services Drive, we can sell that building, and therefore generate more revenue to come back and do the fleet maintenance portion. And just so you know, the difference between the fleet maintenance build-out and that number is double, which is why you're looking at it the way you're looking at it. If it was up to just operations, meaning what is best for the operations, it would be to move over fleet first, but again, the price tag is twice of what you're looking at.
The city of Concord is interested in buying our General Services building out there, the green, the white building with the green stripe, so we're in the process of having it appraised now, so that we can take them at price to make sure we're good, so.
Quick question at the risk of asking something that will be painfully obvious once you answer it. The difference between moved out and reduced, because when I look at the, like Camp Spencer, and you see moved out of 200 grand, and the total left's 225, to me, that means it used to be 425, but what's the difference between showing it as moved out and reduced?
Meaning, meaning that the next portion of that project would happen in the next fiscal year.
Or the one after that.
Or the one after that.
Pushed out.
Yes, moving, yes, pushed out, not moved out.
Okay. So, it wasn't painfully obvious.
No, no. No, it's a constant chess game, so it's trying to determine the needs.
So, are you saying the total project is 425, and 200 of that's been pushed out to another year?
Yes.
Okay.
That represents, one of the last-minute additions to that project, as it actually was already existed as a CIP, was a request for an open-roofed archery building, something for archery for, for archery training classes out there. And that has kind of, as it's expanded in terms of what I was originally told it was and then versus what I've seen images and YouTube videos of what it is at other counties and municipalities, it's kind of expanded. So, that, that's why we pushed that out because we haven't clearly vetted that. The other two items, the overlook and the vending machine, are actual things that we've already gone through the initial design process. I believe it was four years ago, we used operational funds from infrastructure and asset management to actually go through the design process of this is physically what you need, this is physically what you want, and this is physically where we're going to put it.
So, the $200,000 that's pushed out is not related to this project listed here, really?
They're all Camp Spencer.
Right, okay.
Job, you know, projects, but yes, you're right. It is not related to that vending machine, that overlook.
Okay.
As we go on down the list, you can, you did point out that we have things that are moved out, pushed out, and some that are reduced. And we have available unallocated balance and I can't see that from here, I'm sorry. The very bottom number is 188,894. So, when we started looking at the available cash funds, we knew we had to either move out some projects or maybe even reduce some projects. So, these are the combinations that we've come up with so far. So, as we go on down the list for the school projects, they had asked for three activity buses, but we knew we could do two. So, we put 200,000 there and reduced it by the 100,000 and on down with the, also with the security cameras, we were pushed out 100,000 there. Still giving them some of their requests, but not all of it. And by far, it's not, this short list of school projects is, you know, doesn't put a dent in their school requests that you can see on down, further down the page. But as we go down each one, we spoke about the activity buses. That's for the opening of the, excuse me, we've already, we've already given them some activity buses from new schools. These are for ongoing replacements of activity buses. And then the replacement electrical service, this has come up, some of us have been on the school budget committee meeting for many years and this one's come up. It's a hazard for Mount Pleasant Elementary School and it keeps coming up and we just know we need to replace electrical service at that school. So, that's 568,700. There's also the need for some security cameras and that's also very highly spoken at the budget meetings that we attend each year. So, we've been able to allocate 415,246 with this pot of money. And there's always a need for the mobile units. That's the next one is 2.4 million dollars. The, with the reduced class size, what's been mandated or phasing it in over a couple of years, they're going to need some mobile units to keep up with that and just for some growth at different schools. So, they're asking for those mobile units. I believe that's 20 mobile units, if I'm not mistaken, but it's 2.4 million dollars. And the last thing is for the Rowan Cabarrus Community College Building, they needed the re-roofing and that's $300,000 for one of their buildings.
Susan, didn't we just buy 20 mobile units within the last year?
We did. We actually, if you remember, we borrowed money for that.
Right.
So, we did. And this is another 20, 20 mobile units for the next year. And it's hard, it's hard to imagine and like I said, some of it, some of it is based on the reduction in class size for the K through three, that's right.
And there's a limit on the number of mobile units they can have, is that correct?
Some of the properties are like landlocked and so they cannot put them, put them on some, they'd have to let you know which schools, but some of them, there's not room to put mobile units.
Yeah, some of them depends on the lot size and then also the, the, they have to be within certain distances of restrooms, they have to be in certain distances of rescue areas. So, there's, there's building codes and, and recommendations from emergency management as well to keep those in safe areas in case they have to evacuate and get inside to the building, so.
And are these replacement mobile units or are they brand-new? And those are not replacing seats, they're making more seats?
Making more seats. They've also put in some requests just during our budget meetings for some re-roofing and repairs to some of their older aging mobile units because they do have, start to have problems over the years, so some of them are very old.
Talk throughout the rest of the list or as you can?
Well, yeah, we can. I mean, it's.
You don't have to go through individual project. Yeah, just.
You might be here all night, yeah.
You have a long list underneath there. Those are other projects that have been identified by our, our county departments and our school departments. So, as you can see, we still have a long way to go. And the, if there's something on that, on that list down there below that you think or see that is more important from what we have identified at the staff level, please let us know and we, if we can do so from a dollar amount, we will make those changes accordingly. But this is what we have done through our evaluations and this is what we're recommending to you.
So, and I probably should know this, but what's the Lomax Incubator Farm Utility Planning and Installation?
I'll let Jonathan answer that for you.
Okay. So, we actually, you had given us some funds to employ Kim Lee Horn to look at what it would take to extend sewer service, water service, public water service, improve the electrical and the data to that site. And so, those were, that was just a rough estimate of the cost. Actually, as we've gone forward with that, we eliminated the idea of bringing water down there and are looking at alternatives. So, if there's a building built there that has an assembly space in it, it does need to have fire protection, but the water cost was far too high for the benefit. So, we would look at an alternative fire protection system and that. And then sewer service ultimately, if we add classrooms out there and with the number of people we have out there and they're already having to bring out porta-johns, we will need to extend the public sewer. We do need for the, the needs that have been estimated to upgrade the electrical service, but Concord has actually looked at doing that because it's part of their service area. So, that, one of the reasons that's pushed back is we're also still looking at what the ultimate building needs are out there and the different ways we can serve them.
As you can see, the list is vast and just the ones that we have not identified funding for next year is somewhere in the area of 90 million, 92 million, yeah, 92 million that are out there. So, those are needs that are going to be coming down the line over the next several years. So, we will be bringing those to you as we and the schools see that we can afford and deem appropriate, so.
Mike, what is the northeast Cabarrus Radio Tower? 160,000, what, what is that?
That's been identified by the sheriff's office as part of, so we, Kyle can help describe these. They actually look at their radio transmissions throughout the county and have shown us some dead spots. And in fact, Sergeant McGee played some tapes for us and showed how the transmissions go in and out. So, we are looking for a tower site in the far northeastern part of the county and then we're also looking at how high that needs to be to, to create the propagation or the transmission and propagation that we need.
And that's primarily for the sheriff's office?
Mm-hmm. Sheriff EMS. We would look to share. They've had discussions with Stanley County about some needs they may have as part of the regional system that the manager works with.
Well, I don't know how the rest of the board members and staff feel, but that might be something that we could pretty strongly consider paying because it is within the amount we have unallocated and it would just be one thing that lists on the list.
I'm afraid that's just the beginning cost on that one. The estimated height has, so we, we actually, we have been moving forward and we have a consultant that works with us on our towers and so we've actually started to do additional work on this to refine those numbers for you. We agree there it's necessary, particularly as we looked at those maps, but we, we need a better idea of what has to be done first to present it to you.
Okay. And then the other, the other projects that we've just went over, particularly the county projects, the amounts that you've got here, is there any kind of contingency built in that or is that just what the expected cost is?
Yes, there are contingency costs in those. The only one that would fluctuate is the governmental center roof and skylights.
Okay.
That's a moving number right now. The number didn't move in the direction I liked it, so I'm going back to ask some more questions.
We'll have to hurry up because it won't go to higher.
Like we said, this is preliminary, but we just wanted to continue the discussion that we had had on our radar to take place at the retreat, so.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 4.1 from Cabarrus County Schools, increased funding for new charter school students. And I think Ms. Dubois will talk with us about that.
Yes, and as we do the school budget, go through the school budget process, we do actually come out with an ADM figure per pupil. And last year, the charter school numbers were less than what they had budgeted, so we removed money from the school systems. This year, Cabarrus County Schools, after they had their first and second day count, had 142 more charter school students than what was budgeted for. And that cost is 270,465.98, which is basically 142 students times the ADM of 1,904.69. And the school system is required to take this money and transfer it over to the charter school systems as they are billed. So, we are requesting the funding to be provided for those additional 142 students and it would be coming out of increased revenues for interest on investments that will cover the cost associated with that.
Is that 124 or 142?
142. Did I say it backwards? I'm sorry.
Oh, no. It must, is it 124 when I'm looking at?
I transferred on the, yeah. Yeah, well, I transferred it when I talked, I'm so sorry.
So, which one is it?
It's the 142 in there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, this, this 142 are not necessarily new students. I mean, they're not students that necessarily moved from Cabarrus County Schools to the charter school. They just showed up in the total. Some of them have come from other directions or do we know?
They would have had to have come from Cabarrus County Schools in order for Cabarrus County Schools to have to pay for them. So, they could have been in our school system and decided to go to charter schools or...
They could have been homeschooled.
Could have been homeschooled.
And chose to go to a charter school.
And truthfully, could have been a kindergartner starting out, yes.
Right. So, that's what I was saying, if they were in Cabarrus County Schools, we would have already funded them there, right? It's always confusing to me.
It, it is very confusing. I understand what you're saying now.
Yeah.
So, we, we kind of do a hybrid system. We don't really fund per pupil. The school systems provide us what their requests are and what their needs are and then we try to provide the funding to cover those needs.
Right.
And once those, that number is established, it gives us a per pupil amount and then that is applied to the number of charter school students because that's what they have to transfer over. So, what it's allowed us to do is to be able to, with the fluctuation of charter school students, to be able to make an adjustment without having to give more money. So, let's just take this situation and we didn't do it that way and we threw all their money into current expense. We would have also not only had to match this 270,000, but we would have had to give Conapla City Schools 11% increase because.
Ratio thing, yeah.
On that ratio thing. So, this was our best methodology to prevent that from continuing.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, it, it's a hybrid method, it's best I can tell you.
Right.
But it, it seems to, this is the second year and it, it works, seems to be working. So, like I said, last year, we took money back from both school systems because their population figures were smaller.
Right.
But it came back around and got us. And you all, we all understand too that, you know, we'll see the flip-flop back and forth between charter school students as the kids get older because there's not high school charter schools.
Right.
So, that's where some of the flip-flop can come back and forth.
Pam, I have a question. I never even really thought about this until while you were talking and it created a question for me. Say we got a student that's in Cabarrus County Schools playing football. He, he decides he don't want to play football for Cabarrus County Schools no more. We've paid the ADM for him to come to Cabarrus County, but he decides he wants to go to Conapla City Schools and play for AL Brown. He's on their rolls now. And then he may not like things there, so he just says, I'm not going to do anything, so I'm going to go to the charter school. Where does the funding end? So, we, we don't end up paying two or three times, do we?
Okay.
When he was, I know it's sort of a complicated, and the whole school funding.
So, if he started off in Cabarrus County Schools and he was there for the, within the first two months, he stays. We still can, the funding stays at Cabarrus County Schools. After the second day count, the money stays wherever.
For that current year.
For that current year.
But if he's still there the first of the next year, then the ADM will go to the school he's at.
Correct.
And then if he goes to the charter school within two months after getting...
And same thing, the two-month deal is if you're, the two, after two months, the money stays where you originated, but at the next year, it, it will go to the charter school. Is that correct? I think that's.
Well, yes and no. What, the other thing that the school systems do is that they require a roster every month from the charter schools, which they then match with the addresses to make sure that the charter school students in fact live in Cabarrus County, in the Cabarrus County School District. So, every month, there can be some fluctuation on the local dollars. The state dollars are set. Once the ADM is set and that funding is, if the student, no matter where the student goes, the state dollars don't go anywhere until the next school year. But the locals, the local funds, they will track them and they can go up and down depending on movement of the students. And it is a, it's usually a couple, it could be, just like when you get sales tax money, it's a couple of months behind and you're still trying to figure out where that is. It's the same type of thing. They're asking for the, they're asking for the rosters and you can get, you know, some of them, some of the charter schools, I don't know, the way high majority are, are Cabarrus County students, so they, they really come after the money immediately. And then you could have like a student from Cabarrus County going, I'm just picking Lake Norman area, and they get one or two from Cabarrus County. Well, that school might not be quite as prompt in getting their funding. So, there's a lot, they chase that, they chase those numbers every single month, but we don't pay twice for any student. But there's some slight, there can be fluctuation more, like if you're high school, you fluctuate more at the end of the semester versus the end of the year because you don't want to lose credits. So, you don't want to move in December and then you lose all your credits. So, you don't see a whole lot. Elementary, not quite so much, you could move there more often, but they chase it every single month.
That's, that's not a job I'd want to have to.
Complain about it all the time.
Yeah, chase and match those addresses and everything up every single month.
Thank you, Commissioner Poole, for your well explanation there.
Okay. Any other questions on that item? Okay, then we will move to 4.2, Odell Sewer and Right-Away Easements. Jonathan?
This is an item, as you can see, is already gone before. Cabarrus County Schools have been approved. There is a private development that's proposed at the southeast corner of Odell School Road and Highway 73. In order to provide sewer service to that property and also because of some transportation improvements required, they need a right-of-way for the transportation improvements and a sewer easement to connect to the sewer. So, they're proposing to purchase both of those from Cabarrus County since we are the property owners. Again, the schools have approved this. The one thing I'll point out, the motion's a little different. They have actually employed an appraiser to come up with a fair market values and that has not been completed yet. I suspect I will have that by your regular meeting, but in case I did not, I, I just simply set your action for the appraised value because that's exactly what we would have done. We would have asked, gone out ourselves or asked them to get an appraiser to determine that value. And then your past practice is that when you've approved these sales, that the proceeds from that benefit the school that's affected. So, we would propose that the benefit this particular school.
Questions for Jonathan? Okay, we move to item 4.3, offered to purchase county property off of Bradford Road. Jonathan, again.
We are moving north from that intersection to Bradford Road, just again, almost exactly north of this. There is a four-acre parcel that is privately owned off of, at the end of Bradford Road towards the lake that this map shows. It does not front on Bradford Road, so when the county purchased the property to construct the reservoir, we bought that entire farm with the exception of four acres. There was a right-of-way that is still in place, it does not show on this map, but they do have a legal 45-foot right-of-way to get back to Bradford Road. And what's... And what they are proposing is to purchase that acreage between them and Bradford Road, a little over four acres, from the county. Their offer is, is extremely close to what we assign on tax value to that. I've also sent this to WASAC to review, since they do maintain and operate the reservoir for us. Neither of WASAC nor I have seen anything that we feel would affect water quality from this. In purchasing this, they would have the opportunity, if they wanted to build another home there, but their stated purpose is, is to acquire the land in front of them to make sure that it can't be cleared. This is a wooded site. Really still not sure why the county purchased such a large parcel. This is one of the larger parcels that we own around the lake. It's outside of our, our standard buffer area. I believe, if you look at aerial photographs, it's probably because there was a farmhouse on that, what is now the privately four, private four acres. So I think we bought everything but the farmhouse and some acres around it, and provided them a right-of-way, and, but for what purpose, I don't know. But at this point, it does not serve a great deal of, there's no great need for us, so we brought it forward to you to consider. If you accept this conditional offer, we would need to go through an upset bid process on this, and the property owner is aware of that.
Okay, any questions for Jonathan? This, of course, would be taking property off of the county's books and putting it into the hands of private taxpayers who would subsequently pay tax on it, right?
That's exactly right.
Okay, we move to item four point four, waterline easement at West Cabarrus High School. Jonathan, again.
Now we're going to move east to get to West Cabarrus High School. This one may look familiar, because we have done so many easements and right-aways at these, at these school sites, but this is a waterline easement for that high school. It's really for a secondary waterline, kind of loop the water through this property. And again, as the, as the property owners, the board of commissioners, need to approve this.
Okay, any questions on this one? Okay, we will move to item four point five, from emergency management, fire services overview, consideration for completion of fire manpower program proposal. And we have an assortment of folks to talk with us today. Steve Langer, Jason Burnett, and Bobby Smith, and Alan Burnett. I can't see if they're all here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you today to talk about the expansion of the manpower unit program. As Commissioner Moore said, we do have several individuals with us here today. We have our EM Director, Bobby Smith, our emergency planner, Jason Burnett. Jason is also a chief in neighboring county. We have Chief Alan Burnett with the Midland Fire Department, and we also have the Board President of Northeast Fire Department, Patrick Bergeron, here with us as well. So to get started, we've kind of created a PowerPoint presentation for you to kind of discuss, you know, where the, the fire services, where we were, where we're at today, and, and kind of where do we go. You know, looking at our, our fire departments, back when they were originally started, most of them were mainly self-sufficient through donations and fundraisers for the departments. At different times, fire tax districts were established to kind of create a consistent funding for our departments. Over the years, our fire department districts have changed a little bit. Originally, when the fire department districts and insurance districts were established, the state allowed four-mile districts. And then they've increased to five to six-mile districts. Back in two thousand and six, we actually had a grading from the state where they came in and done an inspection and found that we had some areas actually beyond six miles. And that kind of led to the development and build of the Midland Station Two. At that time, we had some area in the Flow Store Fire District that was, would have been considered unprotected in Flow Store. At that time, did not want to look to build another station, so Midland did, and we changed districts. Otherwise, the districts have relatively stayed about the same. Back in two thousand and one, an internal review, looking at state rosters, showed that we had around four-hundred-and-fifteen true volunteers at that time. Currently today, when you look at the, the services provided by the departments, we have ten in-county departments. We have two out-of-county volunteer departments, and then we also contract with the municipalities in the county to cover portions of the county. We used to have fourteen volunteer departments. As the cities have grown, annex has taken place, then we've had departments that have dissolved over time. Our departments are nonprofit entities that contract with the county to provide fire and first responder services. The employees of these departments that work part-time, they, they are nonprofit employees, they are not eligible for any type of state retirement. The only thing they are eligible for is volunteers. If they do twenty years of service with the department, and the department pays into the state Fire Management and Rescue Pension Fund, they are eligible at age fifty-five for a small supplement of, I think, a hundred and seventy dollars. But otherwise, they don't get any type of retirement. Our departments, like I said, are funded through fire tax. The department's tax rate can go up to fifteen cent. We only have one department currently that meets that, that max, and that is the Harrisburg Rural District. Departments are also funded through a portion of the sales tax and the staffing grant that is provided by the county. When you look at the sales tax revenue for the departments, for our in-county departments, that ranges anywhere between twenty-one thousand up to two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars that is provided.
A little bit more on where we are right now. Looking at our rosters today, our departments currently show a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-three volunteers and two-hundred-and-five paid members. When you look back towards what we were looking at earlier, you're saying, well, those numbers are running kind of close, but the difference is looking at, at what we are calling the volunteers and paid members. Back in the earlier times, those were, were true volunteers. Some of those departments did do pay-for-call, you got a certain stipend for each call you ran, but they were considered volunteers. Now we're showing only two-hundred-and-twenty-three volunteers on these rosters countywide, and showing two-hundred-and-five paid members. So these folks are part-time, paid to be there at, at certain times. Now this is consistent with state and national trends. Volunteers are decreasing at a rate of about twelve percent per year. We're seeing that here in this state and in this county, and the departments are having to, to transition from the volunteer to now they are paid and volunteer departments. So if you kind of look at the, the national chart on the side, you'll see the calls in orange continue to go up, and if you follow the blue line of volunteers, you'll see that drastic decline over the last, last few years. Why is this important, looking at the two-hundred-and-five paid members? Is that, this is significant because we're having to pay now for people to be there, because the volunteers are declining. But we're also competing for that same pool of volunteers, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little more in detail in a few slides. But a lot of these folks are working full-time at other departments, so they're not always available, but they're on these rosters. And what we all need to understand is that a department could have a full roster, but that does not necessarily mean that all those people are available every hour, every day to respond. So that's something we have to keep in mind as, as we're analyzing our, our current status.
The current fire service funding, when you, like I said, you take the fire tax and the sales tax that's provided, is around five-point-eight million that goes to fire protection. If you were to look at a full-time paid fire service with the number of stations that the county has, you would be looking at an excess of twenty-three million for complete operation and full service for the county. And you can see there's, there's a big gap there in calls, so it's, it's kind of hard to, you know, expect our volunteers to, to meet every call in a timely manner, when they're really not, don't have the funding to do that, or the people, especially with the decrease in volunteers. Due to volunteer availability, back in two thousand and six is when we established a staffing grant, because we've seen at that time, we were seeing some gaps in coverage and delays. So we implemented that staffing grant, which provides thirty thousand dollars to each of the volunteer departments to try to help staff, and its original intent was Monday through Friday, eight to five. You know, since then, two years ago, we implemented the manpower unit. That again was to, to help provide some additional people on the fire scene to help with large incidents. We originally started the squad out kind of more of an eight-to-five program, with the intention to moving it to a twenty-four-hour model. When we started this program, we were probably fourth in the state that had some sort of paid county firefighter staff. Today, recently, a county had did a study and passed it out to all the counties for feedback, and today there are ten counties that have some sort of form of paid firefighter staff. So we actually, Cabarrus County makes eleven.
Steve, before you go further, the twenty-three million, does that include purchasing all-new equipment, or is that an annual cost?
No, that, that would be an annual cost, looking at the staffing, the maintenance of what would be there now in the stations and stuff.
Currently Squad Four Ten is operating on a rotating twelve-hour shift, seven days a week, seven AM to seven PM each day. There's also one hybrid day in there that's built in for the two-week payroll cycle. They are co-located with the EMS Station Two, Highway forty-nine, across from Central Cabarrus High School, and we've found a, a great partnership with our, our county EMS agency for them to be able to essentially provide backup services to EMS during peak times by manning a, a staffed unit there. So, so we're seeing a, a great return there for being able to assist our county EMS agency as well. The squad is typically able to get out to fire departments and assist through training evolutions, host testing, ISO inspections, equipment familiarization. There's a lot of different types of equipment that each department has, and it's important that the squad personnel understand that, different types of equipment, so when they arrive, they can, they can quickly mesh right into that, to that mold, to be able to pick up and, and carry that mission forward. They've also completed seven-hundred hours of training in two thousand and eighteen. I wanted to highlight the ISO inspection process just for a moment, and provide a quick background, and also a little bit of information that we found from a recent inspection that was conducted here last year within the county. ISO is the Insurance Services Office, and it's a national organization that provides criteria that evaluates fire departments from a fire prevention, fire suppression, or fire extinguishment background, essentially evaluates their ability to respond to a fire and properly mitigate or extinguish a fire within certain parameters and certain criteria that's built out for that. There's four different areas that that evaluation focuses on. Emergency communications, which looks at their ability to receive a dispatch through our local dispatch center. It also looks at the water supply, so the available water supply that a community has, or the ability for the fire department to provide water to a, to a site that, or to a incident that has a fire. It also looks at community risk reduction, which focuses on fire prevention, fire inspections, fire investigations, fire education. And it also looks at the ability of the fire department to provide that service through equipment, inventory, personnel, things of that nature. So we wanted to highlight the personnel, because the recent inspection identified that most departments have automatic aid or mutual aid type assistance, where another department will respond to provide additional assistance to the primary department in which an incident would be located. And we found through that recent inspection that the criteria's changed a little bit, and we're seeing a lot more point generation from company personnel or the staffing manpower section. And one of those was the ability for the, the squad to respond to these areas, and the point value that we saw from just the squad being able to assist these, these departments. It looks at the ability to respond within five miles of a fire district, and it also looks at the staffing level that is provided from the automatic aid partner. So by having the squad at a full-time capacity, and even in the twelve hours, we saw a huge return on that, and we would expect an even greater return by moving that to twenty-four hours, to be able to even assist these departments and lowering their ratings even more for being able to, to provide that, that level of service to those different areas. In addition, we've also seen increases in call volume, once the squad has, once the inception of the squad has occurred. Obviously, the, the eight-to-five span when we originally started, we're able to gather a base, but we've seen an increase in the twelve-hour span, and we project an additional increase in call volume to the, to the twenty-four-hour span as well. The majority of calls are occurring between nine AM and eight PM each day, that is including the weekends, and we're seeing a, a couple of peak time areas between nine PM and midnight, and between four AM and eight AM. So one of the areas that we're focusing on there is the four AM to eight AM time span, especially from a volunteer standpoint. As most of you know, most people that have a job from eight to five typically have to get up, you know, before that time period to get ready, get kids to school, things like that. So it's very challenging for people to commit in a volunteer capacity, to be able to respond there, knowing that they have other commitments such as jobs and childcare and things of that nature. So we're, we're wanting to focus on that, because the, the squad can continue to augment that for the times that the volunteers may not be available for their normal work duties. We're also seeing increased response times from area service providers. Again, that goes back to that volunteer component, when part-time staffing may not be offered at some of our volunteer departments. Obviously, a person that has to respond from their home to the station, pick up a, a firetruck and then respond to the scene, is going to take a lot longer than someone that's actually at the fire station ready to respond. That has to be taken into account as well, and that's why we're seeing that, not only here locally, but also in a, in a national trend across the board from the volunteer standpoint, that we're seeing those increased response times. There was also a recent study done back in two thousand and eighteen of one of our municipal departments here in the county, that noted a strain on putting an effective firefighting force actually on the scene within a certain amount of time. The study highlighted the fact of needing to turn out fifteen personnel to a residential fire, and also upwards of twenty-seven personnel to a commercial-based fire. So you can see the numbers are pretty significant to be able to turn out a, a increased number of staffing within a certain time period to be able to effectively extinguish that fire. So by having the squad, and by moving that squad to twenty-four hours, gives us a lot more flexibility to be able to assist other agency, or other partnering agencies there, or volunteer departments, with things of that nature.
Okay, so we've talked a little bit about where we were and where we are, so we'd like to take a few moments to just talk about what's the next steps? Where, where do we go from here? Of course, staff recommends twenty-four-hour coverage for Squad Four Ten. This was indicated at the very beginning of, of the program. When we started the program, we felt that we would eventually like to get to this point. We wanted to step into the water a little bit and, and see how things would go, and that's why we chose the, the eight-to-five model, just to, to test and see and, and look at the data. Then, the next budget year, we considered adding a second squad, but we felt that, looking at the data, that expanding to the twelve hours would be the more logical step to going towards the twenty-four hours, and expand that coverage into Saturday and Sundays. As staff has indicated, it's not just Monday through Friday that, that our volunteer departments are, are seeing a, a lack of available personnel, but it, it's every day. And again, I want to reiterate, we have some excellent volunteer fire departments in this county, and they do an excellent job, but again, the trend is that if you don't have people available, there's only so much you can do. And this is not an indictment on any performance or any department, we're just looking at ways the county can help fill a gap, and that was the purpose of the staffing grant, and that's the whole purpose of Squad Four Ten, is just to help fill that gap and augment. So we are recommending twenty-four-hour coverage for Squad Four Ten. Talked to Mr. Downs and Mr. Marshall, and they've indicated would like to develop a fire strategic plan over the next budget year, to help not only look at, at these gaps that we're seeing, but also what the future holds, and planning out a little more strategically for that future. for that future. And part of that would be exploring mergers as neighborhoods are built and annexed into the city. That takes revenue and district away from those rural fire departments, so are there going to be opportunities in the future for mergers between rural departments, between some type of county and city joint operation opportunities? We've seen those happen before, and so is that something we need to look at through this strategic plan? And we also want to evaluate our current grant, the staffing grant Steve talked about, and we put in place in 2006. And again, that was our first step to help fill a gap, and we need to study that and see how that's being administered, and is there a better way? Right now, it's a, everybody gets this amount, but is there other models we need to look at where if there's certain departments that are having less funding and having more issues, do we need to look at a tiered model? And some departments receive X amount of dollars and other departments receive a certain amount. So those are some things that we would like to look at along with and during that strategic planning process for the fire service. So again, why do we want to go 24 hours to the squad? Again, we want to provide that additional manpower on those incidents that require the assistance, and as Jason talked about, to put an effective emergency force on the scene. Like I said, trying to put out, put 15 to 27 people on a working fire incident at 3:00 in the morning, that's tough for anybody. So again, we want to look at helping fill those gaps with this unit. Again, provide assistance and times personnel coverage when it's low and availability is limited. One thing we've discussed about the squad as we go, if we move towards this and end up with the 24-hour staffing, is working with our fire chiefs and studying our data and see what areas where we're having longer response times. What areas are we having a lower turnout? What times does this chief think he's not going to have the people there? And actually start maybe rotating the squad around and moving it into those areas during those timeframes to help fill those gaps and add a quicker response. And also to continue our great partnership with EMS and provide them some additional assistance if needed after those hours.
And then just to touch on that, you know, I'm not sure if y'all are aware, but when EMS does start having a heavy call volume load and they start running short on EMS trucks, with where the squad is based and housed at EMS Station 2, they have a spare EMS unit there, so the squad will go in service when EMS calls and start manning that unit to help them fulfill their needs, so. So looking at the cost, at the moment, looking at, we looked at an April timeframe, and there would be some one-time costs for turnout gear and equipment at 24,000, and then the personnel cost of 78 for a total of 102. Looking at the impact to future year's budget, you would have the personnel cost, costing uniforms, purchase services, and dues with a total annual cost of 316,928.
As we have been looking at this and discussing with staff, I know some of the questions that may come up is, well, aren't you taking money away from the fire departments? Well, no, we're not. This program and the staffing grant is funded out of the general fund. As staff indicated earlier, the fire departments are funded out of their fire tax along with that staffing grant and their sales tax. So none of these monies come out of those pots that are going to the fire department, so it's not taking any money away from any fire departments for this program. You may hear that the squad's not needed. I think we would disagree with that assertion, and we have seen some good outcomes from having the squad in place. I believe Chairman Morris, Commissioner Poole, Mr. Downs, you were at a meeting where the question of the squad came up, and I think it was overwhelmingly from the chiefs in attendance at that meeting that this was something that they supported, this program. Another thing you may hear is that the county's trying to take over the fire services. That is not true. Again, as I stated earlier, we're just trying to help fill a gap, to augment. That was the sole purpose of the staffing grant. That's the sole purpose of this program and the proposal. If I could take over the countywide fire service with four guys and a firetruck, I'm in the wrong business. I need to be a consultant because I could make a lot of money if I could pull that off. So again, I just want to just say, that's not our goal here. Our sole goal is making sure our citizens have the coverage they need when they need it, and our fire departments have the support they need when they need it. And one other thing you may hear is that some of our districts are too far away, and the squad cannot be effective in that, and that's why I save the best for last, and I would like Chief Burnett, he is one of our longtime-serving county fire chiefs here in Cabarrus County in the Midland Fire Department, which is also one of the districts that's furthest away from where the squad is housed. So I'd like to hear, and for you to hear, Chief Burnett's thoughts on the squad program.
Excuse me. Good evening, Commissioners. I am here today to speak on behalf of additional funding for Squad 410. When I joined the fire department, I was 16, Midland, was running approximately 35 calls a year. We run approximately 1,000 calls a year. There were no such thing as IPG, coroning the traffic, what's coming up and down the highways every day, the railroads. Just to give you a little bit of the need for Squad 410, 24 hours a day, approximately 6:30 in the past month AM, on February 5th, I believe it was, we had a head-on day on 24/27. Squad 410 does not usually come on duty to 7:00, but they was on duty early that morning and was a great help in helping save the life of the people involved in that accident. A lot of times, we have more staffing during the day now than we do at night. Midland has put on staffing over the years. We've seen the need for it with the investment in our community through industrial and residential, commercial. At night now, when we get, we call for assistance, majority of departments do not have anybody on duty. The volunteers have to respond from their house. Living behind the fire department myself, the best I could do in my younger years would get to the fire department in five minutes. That's five minutes just to get the truck out the door. Then if I'm assisting another department, that might be another 12 to 15 minutes away. You're talking 20 minutes to get one truck there, and you'll have one personnel on that truck. With Squad 410 coming, having three to four personnel that is trained and do the job is very needed. It can make a difference in saving property, but at most saving a life.
And we've already seen some success with the squad. Recently, at the Hearts and Heroes event, the squad was recognized for three events this past year in which they were involved in CPR with patients that survived. So, you know, that right there has shown the benefit of that squad being in place. We purchased extrication equipment for the squad this past year. Within the first six months of that equipment being purchased and on the truck, the squad has already used it three different times. On one incident, there were three departments, their equipment and the squad's extrication equipment had to be used. So again, just some of the things that we've seen that have shown the benefit of the squad being in place.
Just a couple of comments. Bobby, I've heard a lot of the comments that you said, that you mentioned, you know, about we're so far away, it don't benefit us, and some say we don't need it, this and that and all. But I agree with what Mr. Burnett said, and everyone for that matter goes, and, you know, we've talked about this several years ago, that the days of volunteer is going away slowly. It's decreasing. And I think that one of the reasons that we have such a decline obviously is the availability because of being parents and, you know, that have other responsibilities. But it's also the requirement. I mean, it's not like the typical average public guy out there thinks that you can just run up and grab a fire hose and start fighting a fire, or you can show up on an accident, in an accident scene, and then try to administer medical care to someone without training. And I know that over the years, that the requirement for training has got so high that I think that's probably a big reason that we're seeing a decline in the volunteers. Bobby, what are they, what's the kind of requirements that a fireman has to have now to be able to, it might be Steve, you know, whoever can answer, but I know it's hundreds and hundreds of hours that they've got to have to learn how to do what they supposed to do.
Yeah, I think me and Jason both can tag team this one. I mean, there is multiple certifications out there. I mean, your basic certifications, your firefighter one and two certifications. Then there's technical rescue, you know, to be able to do extrication from vehicles. Then the EMT hours, so I mean, you are talking a lot of hours. And that is one of the things that we have heard from some of the departments, that that's definitely one of the hurdles, you know, that they're being faced with when it comes to bringing on new people and being able to retain them, is the amount of time that they have to put in to obtaining and maintaining those certifications. But I want to say it's over 500 and some odd hours just for the firefighter one and two. Is that right?
Yeah, I think everything combined would probably be in the neighborhood of 500 to 600 for those certifications that were mentioned, and I mean, there's recurring stuff, continuing education, other requirements that go along with that. But you kind of pinpointed it with the fact that you just can't run up and grab a fire hose or grab a piece of equipment. You've got to be trained and go through that process to understand how to properly use it and make sure you're safely using it to be able to get a positive outcome from that.
Thank you. I totally agree, and I feel like that there's coming a time, I hope not too awful soon, because it would have a major budgetary impact, but there's coming a time where we're going to have to fund more and more and more firemen to make sure somebody's on the scene when they're needed to be there. And, you know, you're talking a major outlay in order to do that. I'm just over 200 employees, so you can imagine what it would take, and that's just to maintain. That's with no growth. So it would be literally millions of dollars. And we talk about school growth. Well, you know, we don't do ADM on firemen, but if you got to employ 200-plus firemen to cover the bases, it'd be multi-millions reoccurring expense. So I'm, for one, am very thankful for the volunteers. My nephew, he volunteers and he loves it. He'll probably volunteer from now on, probably, but not everybody's that way. And as these guys get older, then they sort of get their families and they sort of drift away because of other commitments, time commitments. But I appreciate bringing this to us, and I don't know how we can work it out, but that's where the staff comes in, and they let us know if we can fund it.
I wanted to comment, because you made a comment about how great all our volunteer fire departments are. I can't remember if it was last month or exactly when it was, but there was a big house fire in Stanley County, and quite a number of our volunteer fire departments went there. I have a friend that lives on that road and heard everything and went to look and had to use tankers to bring the water in, and there was a horse that kept wanting to go back to the barn, but the barn was on fire, and trying to rescue the horse and everything else, and just, you know, just the whole, it was a massive fire. I know, you know, you're nodding, so I know you know, but it was a massive structural fire, complete loss of the house and everything. But all of, I mean, I don't remember, five or six different volunteer fire departments of ours went to help, and y'all all do that. And this unit gives good backup and good support for all the units. I think it's something that we should move towards and find the funding to be able to do that. We can't afford a county fire department for a budget anytime soon, and we need to do what, we need to provide support as best we can to help everybody that's out there. Y'all do an excellent job. So if you haven't heard it, which I know you have, you hear it from your residents all the time, but I want you to hear it from us too, because, again, I had a friend that lives there, and she called and said, "You wouldn't believe how many Cabarrus County units were out here helping to fight this fire." So thank you for everything that you've done.
So we're setting the PowerPoint that 40% to 50% of firefighters are on multiple rosters. Are there any time limits or overlaps when they can serve and when they can't, or?
No, it's just their availability and when they can work, but the point we were trying to make there is most of those are, some of those work full-time at other departments and probably mostly 24-hour shifts at those departments. So they come off that, and then they're going to work at Department A this day and Department B the next day, then back to their full-time job. So it's just a kind of a shuffle, and it's sometimes hard to, I know even with the staffing grant that we provide, provide daytime staffing, it's hard to find somebody to cover those days sometimes. We have part-time for the squad when we have someone calling sick, and we're pulling from that same pool, and we struggle sometimes to get somebody on duty.
Just one more quick question, and I'm not sure who can answer this, but the individual fire departments, and you mentioned we have 10 now, they have the set aside fire tax. Squad 10 don't get that, do they?
That comes directly from the general fund.
Because that's county, totally county-funded.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to reiterate what the gentlemen have said, that they are doing fantastic things with limited resources. They're working hard to try to make this. I can tell you over the last year, they've been coming to me and to Jonathan and trying to work hard to advocate for this, and the departments themselves are working as hard as they can do as well, but they're just losing resources, and that's manpower. So thank you for the support. We will look to find some funding, but it's not the answer, it's not the total answer. We're going to have to look at the future. Is it merging districts? Is it creating a countywide fire service district and creating another funding mechanism? And that may be the option, or a service, a taxing district countywide that we buy, if there's any savings, and buy in the equipment collectively instead of individually. So as we look to do a strategic plan, we want to make sure, we want to update the old one, but then come up with a plan that we think that we can bring to you that's feasible to fund as well. But it's tough. They do wonderful work out there. And again, this planning process isn't to take away anything or take away any control from any local department, it's just the numbers, they tell the story. If the numbers are going down and the response times are getting delayed, we have to do something, and we will do everything we can do to preserve the individual departments and stations, but in the end, we've got to do what's best for the entire county, so.
I have one more thing. I was at a conference over in Charlotte on Friday, and you guys got a shout-out for being excellent. There weren't many of us in that session, but they said, "Where are you from?" And when I said Cabarrus, they said, "Yep." Y'all got it going on good. So you two got, you two specifically got a shout-out for what you do.
You need to tell me who I need to send a check to.
Well, it made me feel good when they said, "Oh yeah, we know what's going on over at Cabarrus," so.
Thank you. Well, I think that as I have had discussions with people from other counties, they've inquired about manpower unit and asked questions, and I think they look at that as a solution to, this is not unique to Cabarrus County. I think, as you pointed out, all across the state, people are having the same volunteer issues. I had heard some of the concerns voiced that you mentioned earlier. I felt, after attending the meeting that you referenced that Commissioner Poole and I were at along with county manager, I felt much better leaving that after, I think, they went around the room and allowed each chief from each department to comment, and I think overwhelmingly, they found it to be a big resource. So it certainly looks like the right direction to go. Yep, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, next up from EMS, cardiac monitor purchase. We're happy to have Jimmy Lentz with us.
Thank you. I would like to tag on just a minute on what was just discussed with the benefit of Squad 410 to us. It was mentioned that during high call-o times, and just to be honest, when we're out of ALS units, we put the Squad 410 online and they man one of our vehicles at Station 2, which is a totally staffed to the param, or totally stocked to the paramedic level ALS ambulance. And during the day, we have the And during the day, we have the community paramedic resource that we're all very aware of, that's in a quick-response vehicle. And then at night, when we get in that situation, we send out an all-page to our cellphones for all the supervisors that have take-home vehicles to man their vehicles, and with a combination of the supervisor EMS employee and the Squad 410 personnel bringing the truck, we're able to put an ALS ambulance on in the time of need very rapidly. It's a very efficient complement to our service. So just to tag on to that a little bit. Now, tonight, we come before you, or this evening, we come before you for approval to purchase new cardiac monitors for our service. We were in the position two years ago to do this, had the funds allocated, and we're going to go ahead with the purchase of a product, had worked through, you know, investigating the right product and everything, and to our surprise, the company we were, had decided to go with, literally knocked on our door one morning and said they were out of the pre-hospital cardiac monitor business and did not expect to return until 2022. So needless to say, that put us in somewhat of a tailspin, and we started back from ground zero on deciding which product we were going to go with. We have researched in depth and done, looked at, there's really three main brands on the line for pre-hospital cardiac equipment. We have looked at them all in depth and have decided to go forward with the recommendation to purchase ZO, which has been in the business for a long, long time. Will be new to us, but we think it'll be the least eventful learning curve over what we have, which is not available any longer, and we come before you with this. This is not something that was set forth in FY19's budget, but Ms. Farrington and Kristen can tell you and explain how the funds from two years ago were placed in a multi-year fund. So these funds are still available, but it was not specific in the EMS FY19 budget. Obviously, with the two years of inflation, we had some slight increase in prices of cardiac monitors, so we had $550,111 budgeted two years ago for that purchase that fell through. When we got all our numbers together now, we were basically $16,000 short, which Kristen can come up and kind of explain where those funds come from if needed. But anyway, we're before you tonight with a proposal to purchase ZO product 23 by number, but 23 ZOX series monitors at a price of $566,110.96. So any questions on that, I'd be glad to explain.
Well, this may sound a little nitpicky, but just out of curiosity, was this one of the units that you looked at previously when you picked the Phillips?
It was, yes, it was, absolutely.
Okay, so it's not unknown to you, just they didn't make the cut the first time around, and you can't get the Phillips?
That is correct.
So this is, okay.
Yep, that is correct. And they have done some changes, which truthfully, we have just been made aware of over the last probably three months. As we know from the Hearts and Heroes event we just celebrated last month, cardiac, not unlike any of the calls we respond to, but cardiac is one of the places we put a lot of emphasis on, and this is going to fit very well into our program.
So do these replace obsolete units?
That is correct. The typical lifespan of a cardiac monitor is eight to 10 years, our monitors are. Now, because of this two-year delay, we are at the 10-year mark, so it is time, and with the funding available, it's time we need to do something.
Right. Okay, any other questions for Jimmy? All right, thank you. Okay, we move to item 4.7 from Finance, Soil and Water Prime Farmland Funding, and we have Susan Farrington and Kelly Sifford.
Each year, when during the budget process, we look and make sure that we've decided that we needed $25,000 in our legal line item for different land easements that might possibly come up, legal work that goes behind the scenes, and also, we want to maintain $100,000 in our line item in case we need to make a purchase during the year. So, and this year, when we looked at the budget, we needed a budget amendment, and this time, we're going to need the $1,703.50 to get us to the legal amount that we need for the year. So this is just, this is a multi-year fund, so we have to come before you with a budget amendment and a project ordinance to be able to get those funds in the proper place.
And so this is taking care of the annual thing, and then down later on the agenda, we have a separate item where we have run into what we were afraid was going to happen at some point, but we have budgeted out a certain number of easements to do each year. The state has changed the regulations, and we have to do some work that we have planned to do next year, this year. So we have gone before the advisory committee, which the letter's in there, and so that will be also related to this, but this is just the first step, the regular step, and the second one will be the additional funds that we're requesting through that process.
Okay, questions? All right, thank you. Okay, next, item 4.8, North Carolina Educational Lottery Fund Payment Application, Susan again.
Okay. Each year, we come before you that we budget, in our general fund budget, $2 million to help pay for debt service. And so each year, around this time, we come to you with two applications that we send to the state to request funds to make that debt service payment, a portion for Conaples City Schools and a portion for Cabarrus County Schools. That's why there's two applications within the agenda item. We will obtain the signatures from our chairman and then get the chairmans from each of the school systems, and then we'll turn the application in, we'll receive the money, and then we'll actually reimburse ourselves for that debt service. So this is an annual process that we've been going through. So if there's questions?
Do they, do they, do, we have a rolling fund with them? I mean, do we know what that total is, or do they report that, or is it?
We do, we actually do. And I'm going to be coming for you hopefully soon during our budget process. We have some extra money that we accumulate because sometimes, you know, we'll collect extra interest, interest's been going up, and then we'll sometimes, it'll, we'll collect more than $2 million, not just significant amount, but I have the lady in my office working on that now, one of our accountants, and so we'll be able to come to you with some money that possibly we could increase the amount that we use each year for debt service or for some of those one-time projects. During this past year, we were able, if you remember, $500,000 were able to use towards the paving at Conaples Ale Brown's parking lot, used that. And then we also made our regular debt payments, and so we, right now, it looks like, without going back through behind the scenes and recalculating the numbers, we have around $2 million, maybe a little bit less, that we'll have by the end of this fiscal year. So we have, we still have like two more payments, coming in some quarterly payments to us, so we have two more to receive, and we should, we should be around $2 million excess this year. So we'll be coming back to you, trying to decide what you prefer to use this money for. Has to be, has to be used for school construction, cannot be used on technology, so that's some of the uses that we have.
So what is our, so that would make our total for this year lottery proceeds, what? Ballpark?
She had this one here. Trying to look back, think back through my spreadsheet. It was, this year, we're estimating like 2.2 million that's coming in for revenues between for both sole systems.
Right.
Because we have to keep up with it for Cabarrus County Schools, Conaples City Schools, and we actually get a portion of real lands that we have to maintain in our checking account, we have to distribute to them, and they have not had a request for their money in quite a few years.
But you said you estimated the excess at the end of the year to be?
About 2.1.
Two, 2.1?
Yes.
That includes the two we're taking now?
Yes, yes, that's backing it out, yes.
Yeah, for a minute there, I thought you were saying two, two million additional, I said, "How could that be?"
No, 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 we, my estimates are backing out what our lottery payments that we receive for debt service and then accumulation through the years.
So potentially $100 million, $100,000 additional, is that?
For this year, yes, to add to our balance.
Right.
I have, if you want me to, next month, I can give you a more detailed list. I've got our accountant working on some of the projects we funded. I thought it'd be interesting, because we've been having lottery funds since 2006, just to see what we spent money on and then what we've used it, how it's been coming in, and show this year how the interest has went up some, too, because the interest rates are rising. So I thought if that's what you would like to do, I'll present that next month, maybe with some options.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
I think that's good that we do that, because it's a topic that citizens are all the time asking us, you know, we're talking about building schools, funding school, debt service and all that. It's important that the general public realize that we do get lottery funds, but it is specific to school construction, and that's what we use it for, to pay for the debt service for the schools that we've already built. And I just want to try to reiterate that, but we've talked about this in years past also. If we've got money laying there at the North Carolina Education Lottery, then I would much rather us be using it, which is what we've done with the Ale Brown parking paving, rather us be using it than the state, but you know how the state is, they tend to like to hold on to the money. They don't ever want to let go of it, you know, unless they absolutely have to, and we got to send a request to get this, otherwise, they'd keep it from now on, probably. And that's just general speaking there, but I appreciate your diligence on this, though, Susan, and try to keep those dollars rolling, because we can make it work here. For the items such as, well, school construction, but dollars in general, keep them moving. The fire problem, I mean, we want to do, it takes money to do that, and if we got it tied up somewhere else that's not benefiting us, we need to make sure we get it where we can use it to benefit everybody.
I did want to clarify, because I did mistake something just a second ago, that $500,000 was not from lottery funds for Ale Brown. I'm going to, my next agenda item is $500,000, I was getting confused. The $500,000 for the Ale Brown parking actually came for some contingency savings on one of another projects, so I misspoke. The next agenda item is going to tell you about the $500,000, so I'm sorry. But the $500,000 has been taken out of the balance I gave you a while ago, of about $2 million excess that has been taken out. So I'm sorry for the confusion. I think it'll be better if I just show you a whole chart in your agenda package next month to clear up everything, if that's fair enough.
Okay, any other questions on this one?
No, not a question, but just a quick comment, I guess. I don't know how long we've been using that money for debt service payment. I remember being on the school board, talking about it, and we thought that was the absolute best thing to do with it, and so any excess, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, you're only talking about $100,000? There's probably not a whole lot we're going to do with that, so.
We should be able to use about $2 million. $2 million, we got an extra $100,000 this year that we're building into the balance.
So accumulating in the fund is an extra $2 million?
Yes.
Okay.
We're sitting there, we're sitting there like today, I'm sorry, it's so confusing.
We don't need to, you're coming back, and we're going to talk about it more. I would just say my inclination would be is use absolutely as much as we can use for debt service, because we've got the courthouse coming up, we've got more schools coming down, so that would be my inclination. So I guess we'll proceed and talk about various things and whatever, but just to kind of make that known.
Okay, we're moving to item 4.9, Balance Fiscal Year 19 Construction Funding for West Cabarrus High School and Hickory Ridge Elementary.
If you'll recall, last year, this time, about this time, we were determined that we were going to need to delay the opening of West Cabarrus High School and Hickory Ridge Elementary School for another year. So we did not want to go ahead and put money into the construction account, different items that, until we needed it. So we reserved it over in our capital reserve money, and now it's time to transfer it over. So this budget amendment fully funds the request for West Cabarrus High School and the Hickory Ridge Elementary School, including the startup, their furniture, technology, any of the other, you know, the ending balances that we usually pay cash for. So it's not touching the construction debt or anything like that, this is all our cash things that we had already set aside. It's not included in that big items, listed items that we've had at the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, all that's been taken away before you saw those numbers. So this money has been sitting aside for this year, it's time now to put that money over into their accounts. And also, this is where we get the $500,000. We wanted to use lottery money to help fund the West Cabarrus High School, so this is where the $500,000, I misspoke earlier, and I apologize about that. This is the $500,000 we talked about, we're taking from lottery, and you'll have another lottery application in the agenda item that will need to get signed by our chairman and then the chairman of the school board. We'll turn it in, get the money for that, and then we'll be able to reimburse ourselves for some expenditures for $500,000 towards the construction of West Cabarrus High School.
And that request will also have some for Conaples City Schools as well?
This one is just for Cabarrus County Schools, so there's only one application. We do not have to, in, within our spreadsheets and everything, we have to keep it, since it's from the state, we have to keep it on spreadsheets. So we have a pot of money that's for Cabarrus County Schools and one for Conaples, and that money comes in already split for us. We have to allocate the interest, but it comes in and splits the money for us, and we have to keep up with it on a spreadsheet. So that is out of Cabarrus County Schools pot of money.
Okay, any other questions? We'll move to item 410, Updates School Construction Fund and Renovation Fund.
Okay, this one's quite lengthy, too. So we, each year, we need to go through and see which projects need to be closed out. So for this year, we need to close out Cox Mill Elementary School, there was some work done at Patriots, Conaples Middle, and then the sheriff's departments, that those, all those items have been completed. So what we can do is we can make sure that our expenditure budget and our revenue budget equal, and then excess money that goes into a pot of money called available, and we can use it for other projects that come up. So this year, those are the ones that we're getting, going to write off. And then we also have had a request for Cabarrus County Schools for some land testing, and an amount of $12,000 for a future middle school site, so that's being incorporated into this same agenda item. We were just trying, really just trying to do a good cleanup of the school construction fund and the construction renovation fund. So that, the $12,000 is also being requested, so that's a new request. And then for our construction renovation fund, there's a need for camera replacements in the county facilities, we've had a request for $24,099, and this can be provided right now from our available funds in the construction renovation fund. And then finally, as part of our FY19 Capital Improvement Plan, we had 10 yellow school buses that were approved for West Cabarrus High School and for the Hickory Ridge Elementary School, and just like the previous agenda item, we're ready to fund those now, because it's getting close to opening those schools, and the buses have to be ordered. So this was approved, and now we're transferring this over so that we can put it in our capital projects and spend it, the money. This agenda item, like I said, is quite lengthy, but it takes several project ordinances and budget amendments to accomplish this, but this is a good cleanup of old projects, getting things moved in so we can see what's our available money going forward, and to also fund the buses and the camera replacements and the land testing. So all that's into one agenda item, but like I said, it takes several budget amendments and project ordinances to accomplish that.
Okay, questions on that one? Okay, we'll move to 411, Courthouse Funding.
Okay. Kyle's going to come up, and I think it's two agenda items later, and speak about our courthouse architect, pre-construction administration contracts, and engineering, other improvements. So we had come to the place where it's time now to start looking at encumbering money for some contracts. And so far, we've budgeted and approved $6.1 million through the years for this project, but we need more than that. So the need right now is on a separate, Lauren, if you'll go through to the next spreadsheet. There it is. Okay, so for the need right now, we need $11,569,000. And so, so far, we've spent some money, and I think we have a budget of 5.150, that's on down towards the bottom for funding. So we needed to come up with that deficit, so we needed $6.4 million. So what I did was I went through some of our projects. We are now finished with Mount Pleasant Middle School, and we're also partially almost finished with Royal Oaks, so I was able to go in there and clean up some of those. Some things come in under budget for both the schools, we have some contingency monies left over that we keep in capital reserve, and they only, they have to come ask for that money when they need it, so we had some contingency money left over. And then each time, the contractor sales tax, I think, y'all may even remember that, we're paying our construction bills, they'll submit a contractor sales tax statement, and we're able to collect that money from the state. So when we get our sales tax refund, then we'll get that money back. So that money is typically, sits unbudgeted until we need it. And if you recall, we needed that sum of money for Conaples Middle School, and we had some of the issues there. So this time for Mount Pleasant, for example, we had $496,000 that we had left over, we didn't actually use any of that, had that much of contractor savings that we're able now to use that money for other projects. Now, these, at a first glance, you might think that, you know, why aren't we using it on those projects? But this is county money that we have generated. Remember, we borrow money for construction and site development, the other things we're paying county money for. So this is putting money back into our capital reserve fund so we can spend it on other of the projects. So therefore, I was able to use the Mount Pleasant Middle School, the Royal Oaks, and then we had some interest income that we had not budgeted, that we're able to use, and then the remaining was already set aside that we needed from capital reserve money. So that totals 6.4 million, 6,419, $6,419,000. And so that, together with what's available already from the courthouse budget, gets us to the $11,568,000. So all that then says, several spreadsheets, several budget amendments, several project ordinances, to make this money available so we can go forward with Kyle's agenda he's going to come speak about, so we can encumber these monies and sign contracts. If the money is not budgeted, we cannot sign contracts. So this is getting the money in place, not saying we're going to spend it tomorrow, we're going to spend it tomorrow, but we have to have the funding source in place to be able to do this. And this is all before we issue debt for the courthouse. The debt is, and we're going to issue it in the spring of 2020, so we're away from that. But we have expenditures we have to make and be ready for before that time.
Susan, this will also reduce the amount of money that we end up borrowing on it.
This is outside of that. Now, we can't, we have the ability, when it gets time for that, to borrow money to reimburse ourselves. If you'll recall, last month, last month and the month before, we signed reimbursement resolution. So that's in place. So if you chose to choose to increase the amount that we borrow, then yes, we can reimburse ourselves for some of these. These are allowable expenditures that we can reimburse ourselves for.
Okay. But this does go along with our previous practice of trying to pay for design and startup prior to and only borrow for construction. So this is our efforts to do that.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. And we go now to Human Resources Health Insurance Renewal. We are happy to have Lundee and Joanna with us.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us a few moments to speak with you today about the health insurance renewal. Since we weren't there with you at the retreat, just wanted to provide an overview of plan changes we'd like to present and give you an opportunity to answer any questions. So Joanna's going to start with our first slide. Lauren, if you could pull that for us.
I'm first going to start talking about the renewal process that we went through this year. We always begin in October, September, October, looking at the plan year. And this time, when we originally looked at the plan, we weren't going to need to make any changes. The plan was running good at the time. We still looked at the, as last year, the North Carolina Health Insurance pool, but the cost was a lot greater going with them. So it would still be a better option staying self-funded with Cabarrus County and then also with Cigna. So we proposed to continue to stay with Cigna for FY20. And as the renewal process continues, after, you know, the first of the year, we figured out that the cost did increase and claims has risen. And typically, that is the case. But we needed to make plans adjustments for FY20. Looking at the plans, we want to keep the dependent coverage premiums the same as they currently are. And then when we do the renewal process, we look at both plans that we do offer for employees currently. And we have two plans offered, the Open Access Plan. However, employees hired after July 1, 2017, they're no longer eligible for that plan. And we continue to open, have the HSA plan for all new hires, excuse me, and current employees. I know when it was presented at the retreat, one of the questions was about, you know, the percentage of the employees on the HSA versus the OAP. And it's about 60/40. It kind of depends on how, I kind of broke it down, when you look at employees only on the OAP, it's 38% to 62%. And I looked at, you know, looking at all covered members of the plan, including dependents, and I broke out with the retirees. And then when I looked up everybody, it was about 38/62. 38% on the OAP, 62% on the HSA. With no, you know, new hires eligible for the OAP plan, you know, that will continue to decrease unless the current employees who are eligible for it would, you know, opt for that plan.
So moving forward with an increase, and you'll see that in that third bullet we'll get to in just a moment, we always try to look at the plan design and see if we can come before you with the most palatable solution possible. So the thing that jumped out at us is the difference in the OAP plan and the HSA plan. As you can see, that plan is running over 50% higher than the other plan, and it has a smaller number of employees, as Joanna just pointed out. So we went to our broker, and we asked to explore some options. Basically, those options are to make some plan design changes, or to look at adding a premium for the employees participating in that plan. So we had examples of what both would look like. From there, the process we utilized was to reach out to the employees on the OAP plan, just to get their feedback and to see how this would impact them. So Joanna utilized our new direct connect, sent an email to all of those participants. She hosted informational sessions. We had six sessions and invited those folks to come and ask questions. They were, through the email process, given a copy of those plan design recommendations, so they had a chance to review that. For those who couldn't attend the session, we offered opportunities for them to either email or do phone calls. And we did have employees take us up on that. Basically, at the end of those sessions, the feedback, and it was a small number sampling, I would say, but 32 did agree that the plan design changes were more palatable. We had one email in favor of sticking with the premium option. So with that, we feel comfortable coming before you recommending the changes to the plan design. Joanna's going to go through those in a little more detail on the next slide. So in addition to that, the other item we're here with, for you today, is to ask for an increase in the funding. As Joanna said, even though we were running pretty good at the first check, it has crept up a little bit. So we do feel like we need to infuse a little bit more into the plan and would ask for a $10 increase per employee per month, which is a relatively small amount. But again, trying to balance that with what we feel is fair to our employees participating in both plans, looking at our competition, what other local employers, especially the jurisdictions, are doing. So we'll flip to the next slide. Joanna will walk you a little bit through those design changes.
So the proposed was to keep the health savings account plan the same as it currently is. The highlighted part on the slide in yellow is what is proposed to change. So currently, the individual deductible on the OAP plan is 1,500, so that will increase to 2,000. With doing that, it does, the co-insurance limit would increase as well, 500. So your maximum out-of-pocket as an individual will increase a total of 1,000, because you would add the individual deductible plus the co-insurance, which equals the out-of-pocket maximum. So that would change to 6,150. And then the other portion of the plan would be the prescription drugs. This tends to be the major difference between the two plans, as far as having a copay versus paying 100% for prescriptions. The cost would increase for generic $5, so it would just go to 10. And then the next tier, that's currently 45, will go to 55. And then the third tier is currently 60, and will increase to 70.
So with that, as Joanna stated earlier, we're not recommending any changes to the premium for dependents on the plan. Again, no plan design changes seem necessary for the HSA plan that's running well. We would request your approval to make changes to the OAP plan, moderate changes, but things that'll help balance the two plans, make it a little more equitable between the two. And then the last item, the increase in the funding for the plan. So while we're here this evening, are there questions about the plans or about the proposals that we could address?
I don't have questions about the plan, but I think, Mike, were you in that, the healthcare one Friday? Did you go, okay, there was a, we'll have to see if we can get the PowerPoint presentation from COG on Friday, because they did one about the future of healthcare, which was just kind of interesting. It's not, it won't really impact this, but I thought it had some good data in it, and it's in a different notebook, the notes that I took. But I feel certain we should be able to get that PowerPoint, just for you to review. But I thought it was kind of interesting for the consultant to talk about what he was seeing going down the road for North Carolina. So, kind of interesting. I know I've shared stuff with you in the past on the state health plan that's kind of interesting to see what they're talking about and how that equates to what we're doing. So.
Yep.
Yeah.
Additional questions? Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
All right. We move now to Infrastructure and Asset Management Courthouse Expansion Construction Manager at Risk Contract. Kyle's going to talk with us.
Good evening, and joining me will be Steve Kekes from Messer. He was up at the last meeting, or maybe the meeting before that. So y'all should recognize him. So Susan kind of set the stage very well. So again, you understand, we have to have the money encumbered to be able to sign on these design contracts. So the contracts that you all approved for Silling Architects a month ago had all those percentages and figures in them, and that's when you asked me, how does that look against industry standard and things like that? Now it is putting the money in place to sign that. The next phase of this, and the benefit of a construction manager at risk contract, is in fact, the pre-construction services, or the actual, the discussion between the architect and the contractor to have those discussions. The contracts that we have in front of us tonight from Messer are, is the actual vessel for those pre-construction services while allowing them to add the GMPs as they come in. So Messer Construction was selected as a construction manager at risk for the Cabarrus County Courthouse Expansion Project. These are the standard AIA contracts for Messer Construction for approval by the Board of Commissioners. These contracts detail the delivery of the guaranteed maximum price of the GMPs for the site-enabling package, the Phase 1, which is the new building, and Phase 2, which are the renovations to the existing building. This contract will also carry the pre-construction services, which represents the collaboration work with the design team and is the primary goal of the construction manager at risk project. I knew in this meeting, and I was hoping that some of you would ask me some of the questions about the prices that are detailed in these pre-construction costs. Also went out to the state to try to find a lot of information. I do get a lot of questions all the time that says, doesn't the state have a blue book about design costs, pre-construction costs, things like that? They do have something out there. It is an access to state projects, and we've requested access to it, and we were denied. We were able to talk to them on the phone, and they were to let us, they were able to let us know. We ran a bunch of our numbers by them, not just for this project, but for multiple projects. And they let us know that we were in line. That was not enough for me, so I did a significant amount of research and found different counties and municipalities that have gone into construction manager at risk projects and really dove down into what is their pre-construction services fees? What are their construction management and administration fees? What are their markups? And I can tell you that based on what Messer Construction is presenting as a pre-construction cost, which is about a percent of the entire, of all the GMPs added together, what our estimate of those GMPs is currently, it is in that 1% range. Not only did the state verbally, when we finally got in touch with them, they told us we were in line, but I did research on Buncombe County. I did research with the Department of Transportation, which again, not apples to apples with what they're building. But I found numbers that ranged from pre-construction services anywhere from 0.7% to 2.4%, which I'm very happy we have the percentage we have. So I just wanted to throw that out, because that is the bulk of the finances in this contract right now, until the GMPs, the guaranteed maximum prices, are realized and brought back in front and added into this contract. This is the vessel that will carry that pre-construction services, which is what we need to start right now, which is what we hope that you realize, not only your savings, but your operational and construction efficiencies, and in a perfect world, the driving down of your contingencies that are carried in those GMPs. So that is the contract we're putting in front of you. It is a standard AIA form. The state also uses this and wants us to use this. And actually, just to kind of go into a little bit more research, because I thought the board might enjoy it, I looked a lot at the universities and did some research into what they're doing. And they are now pretty much straight across the board, anything from $3 million up, they're doing a construction manager at risk, which probably puts me, guys like me, out of work at a certain point. But I felt that that was even, because I wouldn't go that low. We would probably do a $3 million project without a construction manager at risk. But they really have started to seek the benefits that come along with it in terms of the synergy between the architect and the contractor.
Kyle, let me ask you, I don't know whether you was here during this period of time or not, but I guess the last major project that the county did was the detention center, jail, annex, and all of that. Do you remember that they have a CM at risk there?
We did.
You did?
Yes, sir.
We actually had a CM at risk at the Board of Elections, too, but it was a smaller project. And while I, the synergy between the two entities was great. And I know for a fact, we drove our costs down, because it was a, it's a pretty significant renovation project. The jail, I believe County Manager Downs would agree, the construction manager risk portion of that, especially the pre-construction services, was probably realized late in the game.
Yeah, we did. And the decision to go CM at risk was after the architects had already been engaged and were pretty far along in their process. So we didn't get the benefits of some of the design review from the CM, but it still ended up, it was still a good experience for us as well.
And just so you know, both Messer and Silling have been in the rooms with each other. Well, first off, we've been in the room with each other a lot, and our attorneys, and our insurance people, and everybody else, and on the phone. And we kind of already have that portal of review, which is as, as prints are brought to a certain percentage, whether they be design, construction, structural, they're going to be dumped to a certain team that Messer already has in place. And we've spent a lot of time going through the people on those teams and lining them up about what are their specialties, and when do we need to engage them and bring them in. So we have spent a lot of time on this pre-construction services. And it is, it's a significant amount to pay. But again, your rewards are realized on your construction efficiency, and hopefully, your driving down of your contingencies and your GMP.
Any other questions?
Well, for whatever it's worth, I read a lot of construction contracts on a daily basis. Addendum A, the rates that are shown, very normal, very industry standard, you know, nothing out of whack. So just in case anybody wants to know, Kyle said it, but I'm just going to back up what he said, because that's exactly what's there.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. And we still have a lot of discussions to have between Messer, the county, and everything. We're looking at, you know, what type of contractor insurance plans? Do we have comprehensive insurance plans? Is the owner going to provide it? Is the contractor going to provide it? There's a lot of industry standard things on that about ways to drive down costs. So we are, we are going through all of that. This isn't to engage us right now so that come the 19th, after your meeting, we can hopefully have Messer and Silling both under contract to start this design process. Because again, I think in the past, you know, we think of an architect does all of the design. But in this case of a construction manager at risk, Messer represents the other half of our design team. Probably going to get in trouble from Tom by saying that, but 25% of the design team, but yes, they are just, they are a vital part of it.
And just to reiterate as well, during the interview process, when we were vetting the different entities or firms that we were going to be using, Messer's reputation was highly ranked, along with the architect that we picked. So this is just the culmination of a lot of work that was done several months ago to get us to this point, to now we can be very confident in the team that we have in place, and that also has a local piece to it with the partnership with L.A. So let's don't leave that part out, because that's going to end up being a very important piece. So anyway, I'm, other than how much it's going to cost, I'm extremely excited about getting going. And every time I drive by the parking lot over there, now that the parking deck is done, it's just even that much more exciting. So we're happy and welcome aboard.
Okay. Well, I think that takes us to another piece of this puzzle.
Yeah, that's right.
And item 4.14, Means Avenue Resolution.
So I think you're familiar with this, but I will go through for anyone who may not be. As we have gone through the programming process to determine what the needs are for the new courthouse, and then taking those further to massing, to look at what size of building and how it would be situated on the site and how it would be laid out on the site, we've paid particularly close attention to how that fits in downtown also. So there were really, we came down to a couple of massing proposals. One of them included a six-story tower in the center of this building that we did not feel was very much in keeping with downtown Concord. The other option was looking at a four-story building, but to do that, we needed to extend that footprint of the building into what is next. that footprint of the building into what is now the right-of-way from Means Avenue. And again, we went through that, and we presented that to different groups, and have got a really favorable response to that, both in how it fit in the building and then also what that allowed us to do potentially with Means Avenue in combination with the city. So we are proposing to the Concord City Council, the closure of Means Avenue as a public road between Church Street and Union Street. That will allow us to put the building footprint out into part of Means Avenue, but it also would allow a public plaza and to expand the public space around the historic courthouse. There are some technicalities to that in terms of some right-of-way easements, some utility easements that the city may want to retain through there, of course, pedestrian easements. Mr. Cook has been working with their council on, on the, both the process for doing this, as well as having that, this resolution that, that's attached to the agenda item that they'll need to pass that kind of specifies that. It is a process where we will, we will present this request to the Concord City Council later this week on Thursday night. They will then set a public hearing for April for public input on this and make a decision. We do not need to close the road immediately, but we will be presenting to them a schedule by which we feel the road does need to be closed. A big part of that, of course, is meeting with the adjacent property owners, and we've identified three adjacent owners, in addition to ourselves and those who lease from us. We identified those three adjacent owners, we held individual meetings with those owners. One in particular has requested that we do some, we helped them with some work to make sure that their business is not negatively affected, especially in terms of parking. So we've done some additional surveying and have asked Kipling-Horn, our civil engineer, to look at some proposals, and we'll be meeting with them again to discuss those. And we'll also pull in the other two property owners, because they are, certainly have some interest in that. And I should say that Mr. Cook has also completed the title work necessary to make sure that those are the three owners who are affected, and then that was confirmed. So we'll be getting back with them. We met with the Concord Downtime Development Corporation head to go through this, and certainly we're open to meeting with any businesses or anyone else who may have concerns about this. But the process at this point is to ask the city council for this, for them to hold a public hearing and consider this resolution for closure, and then that will be done in April.
Okay, questions for Jonathan?
I'd also like to interject one more point. With the schedule that Mr. Marshall just laid out about going in front of the, the city council this month, and again, in April, when we had met with you about the Silling contract, it was that we were not going to release a notice to proceed until we had a resolution hands-down on Means Avenue. So in discussion with Silling, we've, I'm basically asking the board to make a, make a, make a motion to allow a notice to proceed on architectural features and architectural design that are not, not related to Means Avenue. So things like facades and MEP systems and things like that, that I can release them to get going on, because looking at our timeline, we want to start digging a hole in a year. I probably need to start getting on a lot of this stuff that is, has nothing to do with the footprint or where. It would be the same if it doesn't have that footprint. But things like that, that they can start, have a team start working on, we can get not just, not ahead of the game, just in line with the game at this point. So that would be, be something I'd, I'd be looking for from the board, whether that's verbally in the, in this meeting or at the meeting on the 18th, is to allow that, because the way it was stated in the last meeting was, only once we had a resolution on Means Avenue.
And it sounds like that resolution could only come at the earliest late April.
That is correct.
Right.
And we will have lost a very valuable month.
Do we have consensus to proceed on that? I see positive head shakes.
Yes.
Around the room, so I consider that to be consensus.
Thank you. The notice to proceed will be detailed as such, that it makes sure that that is, is laid out clearly.
Right, very good. We have, as I think you all know, had presentations to all of the Concord City Councilmen and sought their opinions in, in this plan, and the feedback that I have gotten back has been extremely positive. I think they're very enthusiastic about, about this proposal, and if I understand correctly, we need to suspend the rules and act on this tonight in order for you to present that to Concord City Council on schedule?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I hear?
And I should add, if any of you would like to join us at that meeting, you are most welcome to do so.
Okay.
Is that, I'm the liaison to that council, and that's on my schedule for Thursday, but they'll talk about it tomorrow at their work session, is that right?
I was asked to be at the meeting Thursday to present the request.
Okay, well, Thursday, I'll, I cannot be there tomorrow, but I'm planning on being there Thursday.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules or procedures so we can vote on this.
Okay, do I? We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and I would now entertain a motion to proceed forward with the Means Avenue Resolution to be presented to Concord City Council. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 4.15, which is a continuation of what we discussed in 4.7. Did you have additional things, Kelly, on that one?
No, I just wanted to, there's, there's a memo attached detailing the recommendation of the advisory committee for $30,000 to be transferred out of the deferred tax fund into the CIP project. As I stated earlier, they kind of changed the rules on us, so we needed to move up some work that had to be done by the end of the year, so that would accomplish this and allow us, as Susan had talked about earlier, with being able to encumber money, that would allow us to be able to do all of that. If you have any questions, Daniel's here about that.
I do think it's important to point out, this is the first time, this is a process you had approved to, to kind of vet these requests, and this is the first time it's been used. Kelly pulled the committee together and, and went through this project, and this was a recommendation to you.
Okay, any questions? Very good, thank you. Okay, we, item 4.16, from Planning and Development, Community Development Block Grant, 2010 Project Ordinance and Budget Amendment. Kelly, again.
Yes, sir. So, we had a payoff on a CDBG project, as required by the grant, that has to be rolled back into the program and continued to be used for that program. So all this is, is allocating that 73.55 into that account to be expended on a project.
Okay, any questions on that one? All right, thank you. Okay, item 4.17, Appointments to Boards and Committees. I think our clerk has probably provided some information over the last week or so about a change in the procedure on, on these appointments. What she has recommended, and I think is a good idea, is that we have these reports at our work session, which gives us an extended amount of time to peruse those and examine them. If anyone sees any changes there, then, then, then we can pull that off of consent agenda for our regular meeting. If not, then we will use our time in our regular meeting to acknowledge and thank those people who have served on boards that may be leaving, and then the, this portion of it will be taken care of in consent. Did I cover everything, Lauren, on that? Did anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, very good. Okay, next is the approval of the regular meeting agenda, which you all have a copy of that before you.
I have two questions. On number six, do we need to change that to 142 students? Does that matter? Says 124.
I think we do, yes.
And then, on the number seven, where you said the appraisal was out on the easement, well, we know that number before we get ready to vote on this?
I hope to have that number for you, but if not, I had set the motion, so if you're willing to do that, we would just set that amount at the appraised value.
Okay.
If I don't have it and you would prefer to actually know that number, then what we could do is delay it a month.
I don't know that it needs to be delayed. I mean, you don't know, do you see it? You don't know whether you wish it could be delayed.
Again, I think that, that is the process we would follow, we would want to get it an appraised value, and they offered to pay the appraiser and find, and get that for us, and it is, will be a certified appraisal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Most of the agenda is presented with one correction on number.
Six.
Lauren said she already wrote it.
Yeah.
Six.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. I am sorry to report that we do not have need of a closed session tonight. I know you're all disappointed. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry for interrupting. On the agenda where you have the scheduled meetings, those budget meeting dates changed.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we've made that announcement to, for anyone who would be interested in attending those budget meetings, other than those that have to be here, but we do want to make sure those, that date has changed.
This is done after the fact, and it will be on your resolution.
Yeah, and so we'll try to publicize those at our regular meetings, so if people are interested, they'll be aware. Okay, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
I'm in.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We stand adjourned. Thank you.